Good evening and welcome to our meeting. It is Monday, November the 13th at 6:01. This regular meeting of the Mesquite ISD Board of Trustees is called to order. A quorum is present and the notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and the manner by law. At this time, our Board of Trustees will move into a closed meeting under authority of Government Code 551.071. Oh my. And no formal action will be taken in this closed meeting and we will return in just a few minutes. Thank you. We begin from a closed session and begin our open session. Okay, um, we have this evening Reverend Chad Flowers from the Vita Life Church. If we will all stand and our pledges will follow that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to lead all of it for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Tell us who you are. Introduce yourselves, guys.
I'm Haven Weston. I'm in fourth grade.
I'm Addison Charles and I'm in second grade.
I am Jasper and I am in fourth grade.
All right. Thank you so much.
Jenna West, second grade.
All right. Guys are awesome. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Well, it is now time for our board moment. Mr. Bingham, I'm gonna ask you if you will start?
Ms. Hornsby asked me to speak a little bit this month about, there are a few things that bring more joy to a neighborhood than opening up a new school. And we got to do that this last month when we opened up Ben &amp; Joanne Cross Elementary out in the southern part of our district. It's our newest elementary school. It was quite a nice event. We named this school for two of our outstanding teachers. Ben taught at North Mesquite, taught sciences at North Mesquite, and Joanne Cross taught upper level math at Mesquite High School many years ago. They're outstanding educators and one of the things we didn't want to be lost in all this is that we are doing that to honor all of our educators and to give the honor and respect due for all of our teachers. And it seemed to be very well received. I told the group there that day that when we name a school, we usually make one family happy and about thirty upset. We didn't get that response this time. We got outstanding reports back and on social media and in person. Ben &amp; Joanne Cross outstanding people, outstanding educators, representing the very best of our teachers. So we were excited about that and it was a great day.
Thank you, thank you. Guess what? Some news for you if you haven't seen. We had national recognition. Mr. Seward, would you tell us about what we did on ABC TV?
Sure. I'm sure a number of you were aware. If you're not, it's gonna be posted shortly, soon for Mesquite ISD Facebook page. But there was a story done on The American Classroom, Texas School District Tackles Teacher Shortages. And it was on Sunday, the short version, and there's a long version later this week. It was on this week with George Sepinopoulos. And I'm proud to say that we had an excellent job done by Caitlin Reeves and Dr. Jeffrey Blackwell, as well as Dr. Angel Rivera in representing our district and highlighting the wonderful teacher retention programs that are happening in Mesquite, as well as the education profession as a whole. They did an excellent job and it was a great report. If you haven't seen it, you can go out there and find it on ABC News and it's a great little report. And I think, when's the extended version come out?
I'd say next year.
Okay. But it was great and proud of the educators and representing Mesquite. They did a great job for us. It was well done and well said. Dr. Rivera, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, he was part of it.
I think I'm gonna buy a source on that, but I'd like to congratulate Ms. Reeves and Dr. Blackwell because, you know, the story was about them and pretty much about our teachers in Mesquite and everything they went through during the pandemic, everything that we did to retain and recruit quality staff this year. We all know the stats. And so together with the Personnel Department and the teachers and MEA, we were able to make a dent. And with these two programs, E-Tip and PACE, we're not only able to retain teachers and reward the great teachers that we have, but we're able to change the lives of paraprofessionals and double their salary in one year.
Very well done. Yes. Is anyone here from a council of PTAs? Okay. I don't see anybody. Yeah. Mr. Garbo.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to share some words. In the spirit of Thanksgiving, I would like to say that I'm very thankful for the things we could offer our students. When we're looking at our schools, I've had the opportunity this month to go to several of the schools and facilities that we have. And Mr. Bingham spoke about Cross Elementary where we did the Arbor Day celebration as well, and we had to acquire kids and all that thing to us. We've been doing the accreditation visits. I went to Rutherford and Galloway where they have some great partnership with the parents and the teachers there, which that's what makes these schools prosper and so effective. We may be a property poor district and we have to compete with those districts around us that are better off economic wise. However, the partnerships that we have with the city, with Eastfield College, that gives us benefits like the naditorium that we have, that's a service that will be given to our kids. The activities that all the kids have, I went to Range, Floyd, Vanguard. These kids are part of those exercises. They enjoy it. They're having so much fun in our schools now that now I know why our schools are so engaged. And it's because we're giving them the empowerment to be engaged and enjoy it. So I'm very thankful for the things that I've seen. I know there's a lot of rhetoric about public schools not being what they say they are and I'm glad to be able to tell people, actually, you're wrong. You just have to come to the schools and see what's happening. You have to be part of it to really enjoy the real public education in this state because it's around the state. Many schools are doing this. So I just wanted to share that thought, continue to ask all our parents to keep working with their schools and their teachers and, you know, let's keep Mesquite being Mesquite. That's what we've been for years. So thank you, Madam President.
Oh, you bet, you bet. Well, thank you. Ms. Joe, are you ready for your student and staff highlights?
Begin by recognizing our Apple Corps teachers this month. And first is Mr. Michael Destefani from Beasley Elementary School. And I believe we have a video to introduce him to you.
It is a pleasure to introduce Michael Destefani as Beasley's Apple Corps recipient for this school year. He embodies the Beasley vision of every opportunity, every day. Mr. Destefani always exhibits a positive attitude and general excitement of being able to teach students. He has a way about him that builds trust and openness that makes a difference in the students' own self-worth and capabilities. It is truly a beautiful thing. Congratulations, Michael Destefani, from the Beasley staff.
So I think teaching is important because we're creating learners and lifetime learners. And as teachers, we need to teach them not only that they need to learn from one person, but also they're in charge of their own learning. They can go out there, experience new things, teach new people. And that's why I think as teachers, we're very important because we're creating lifetime learners.
Let me read this proclamation to you, Michael. Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who are nominated by their peers to receive the district's highest award. And whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the district's highest recognition, therefore be it resolved that the Board officially welcomes Michael Destefani into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on this 13th day of November 2023. Congratulations. We appreciate you so much.
Good evening, Board. I'd like to start and thank you as a Board for honoring us teachers regularly like this. My administrators, Kelly and Rita, Christina Barrington for supporting me and my staff and guiding our campuses. My current Beasley staff for the honor and all my previous Beasley family who may have moved on in the district or moved on elsewhere for all the time we spent together. My students who continue to learn from me and teach me every day. My prior districts and coworkers for driving me to be the best that I can here in Mesquite. My family, Jill and my daughter Maggie, every day supporting me in my ups and downs. My in-laws, Wanda, Tom, the Harpers down in Houston, for welcoming into their family. And my parents, Dave and Tina, for supporting me and raising me to do my best even when it's hard. And my sisters for putting up for me for many years. Thank you.
Michael, do you have family? Have them stand that are here.
Very good.
All right. Thank you.
Our second indungee this evening is Ms. Christine Sidhu. And here's a little bit about her.
Hi, I think that Ms. Sidhu is a great choice for our Apple Corps teacher because she is kind of like the heart of the school. She's always bringing students together regardless if it's senior pictures or if we're doing just a game or if I see her just around, she has her kids out just shooting all types of things we have thrown around on the campus and in the district. So I just consider her to be the heartbeat of the school. Ms. Sidhu, welcome to the core part of Apple Corps teachers. You definitely deserve it.
Teaching is important because we don't only teach our content, but we teach students how to be people and show empathy and kindness and love. And if I can just be a small part in like the growth of students, then that's a privilege I don't take for granted.
I'm not sure I don't drop a good page. I'm gonna read the proclamation to you. Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD. And whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition, therefore be resolved that the Board officially welcomes Christine Sidhu into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on this 13th day of November 2023. Thank you.
Thank you so much for this honor. It feels really special to be recognized for doing this profession that I love so much. I love helping my students grow and instilling confidence and kindness and resilience in them. I'm so inspired by them every day and no matter how much they think that I give them, they give me so much more. They teach me so much about life and love. Every year they push me to be the best me. And I think that's probably the most powerful thing about teaching is knowing that you are investing in these wonderful humans. And if you allow them, they'll also invest in you. And that's a really beautiful thing. Thank you so much to my first principal, Mr. Bruce Perkins. He hired me straight out of college when I had no experience, but he saw something in me and here I am, nine years later, at the same school, now with Ms. Principal Deidra Brown, who believed in me enough to put my name out there for this award. Thank you for continuously believing in my journalism program and for wholeheartedly supporting my students in everything that they do. Thank you so much to everyone who came to celebrate me today, my wonderful students. I love you guys. Thank you to all of my inspirational coworkers. I feel so honored to work alongside such good people who are also my friends. Thank you to my family, especially my sisters. I love y'all. And finally to the Board, thank you again.
Thank you very much. I love it. I love it. Introduce who's here for you. Thank you so much. Go ahead, ma'am.
Each month, we also recognize one of our best paraprofessionals in the district and this month is no exception. So I'd like to invite Dr. Jordan Simmons forward to introduce us to his star pair of the month, Ms. Ginger Bass.
So I'd like to introduce you to the person that really runs West Mesquite High School. Ginger Bass is what we'd say is the heartbeat of West Mesquite. But if you ask Ginger, she will tell you that she has faithfully served seven principals in her time here at West and Taylor Morris. People on campus describe her as a confidante, a counselor, a mentor, a therapist, a listening ear, a shoulder to cry on, the money lady, and most importantly, friend. She makes all of us laugh. She always has a funny quip and knows better than anyone the timing for each. She is a servant leader and nobody is more deserving of this award.
Thank you. And now it's time to recognize our community partner for Replay Talk this month and we have a video to tell the story as well.
This month, we're so happy to honor Community Life Church as our featured Replay Talk community partner. This summer, Community Life Church hosted their annual Serve Week where some groups from the church adopted the Little Free Libraries on our elementary campuses.
SERVE is an event that Community Life Church does every year where we set one week aside where we encourage people that attend our church to group up in their community groups with their neighbors, friends, family, or coworkers to be able to go out into the community, see a need, and feel a need by using their God-given gifts and talents.
These families have gone above and beyond that one week commitment and now they are regularly checking in on the Little Free Libraries to ensure that they stay stocked and in good condition.
We go as a family on Fridays to see if the books need to be cleaned, sorted. Range was a little bit neglected. It needed some love and care.
It actually lends it to where people will naturally start doing it on their own without being prompted by a one week of service.
Most libraries are leave a book, take a book. I know that this library is not bad. These kids are truly, this is a gift to them.
Thank you, Community Life Church, for your support of Replay Talk and Mesquite ISD.
Are plumbers here this evening? Am I ISD plumbing crew? Okay. Y'all come forward. You've gotta get recognized. I'm gonna tell a story about them. So last month, a group of Mesquite High School students discovered a frightened puppy inside a storm drain by the tennis courts, but despite their efforts to assist the dog, it refused to come out of the tunnel. Officer Bobby Tonksavat, the campus ex-SRO, asked the students to return to class and assured them he would handle the situation. While waiting for animal control, M.I.S.D. plumbers Chris Cole, Juan Cruz, Zach McKeefen, Mark Milligan, and Reggie Miles drove by. And Reggie, the driver, asked if everything was okay. Officer Tonksavat explained the problem and the crew immediately called in their thinnest members to enter the tunnel and rescue the pup. I don't know if y'all saw that tunnel. It was pretty narrow. So after a few minutes, they successfully recovered the puppy. So we wanted to thank them for their heroic efforts that night. Oh, the puppy did get a home, by the way. Yes, it was lost and it got back to its home, so. All right. All right, now we're gonna begin our student recognitions, starting with student council presidents. This is Danya Feria from Vanguard High School. Student Council President from North Mesquite High School is Elizabeth Sausado and the sponsor is Zach Brimager and Kristen Haywood. All right, from West Mesquite High School, we have Aiden Slankster. All right, from Mesquite High School, we have Jocelyn Matamoros and her sponsor is From Potteet High School, we have Sofia Escojido and Erosi David. And their sponsor is Michelle Griffin. From AC New Middle School, this is James Aguirre and sponsor is Tajah Reese. Moving on to National Junior Honor Society Presidents, we have Heaven Esparza from Agnew Middle School. From McDonald Middle School, this is Yucenia Aguilar and her sponsor Toni Telemontes From Frazier Middle School, this is Kayden Macklin Bowens and his sponsor David Peacock. From AC New Middle School, this is Vicente Alonso and his sponsor Vanessa Gutierrez. From Kimbrough Middle School, Princess Patterson and her sponsor Jennifer Miller. Now to our high school National Honor Society Presidents. This is Carla Ramirez from West Mesquite High School. From Mesquite High School, National Honor Society President Kayla Ellis. From North Mesquite High School, Jadera Torres. From Potteet High School, Hallie Burkett and her sponsor Elizabeth Rose. Our next student received the National Merit Scholarship Program commended honors on the PSAT NMSQT and scored in the top 3% in the nation. This is Christian Cito from Vanguard High School. Moving on to athletics, this is the tennis team from Potteet High School. They are District 12 5A district champs and area qualifiers and their coach is Dr. Phil Next, we have representatives from the boys' cross-country team from Potteet and the girls' cross-country team from Potteet. They're regional qualifiers and their coaches are Shayla Prince and Jeff Holmes. Shayla Prince and Jeff Holmes. Representatives from the tennis team from West Mesquite High School, they were bi-district qualifiers, and their coach is Hernando Ledezma. Next, we have representatives from the boys' cross-country team from West Mesquite High School, District 12-5A district champs and area qualifiers, and the girls' cross-country team, they were also area qualifiers, and their coach Kamel Ward. Adam has his own recognition. He was the boys' District 12-5A cross-country champion, Adam Fuentes. All right, and now we have the girls' cross-country team and the boys' cross-country team from North Mesquite High School. They were regional qualifiers, and their coach is Greg Hunter. Also with the team is Taylen Link. I'm sorry, Tayla. Taylen Leek. She is the girls' District 12-5A cross-country champion as well. All right, now we have representatives from the tennis team from Mesquite High School. They were bi-district qualifiers this year, and Linda Howig is their coach. Now we have members of the John Horn High School band who received a superior division rating at the UIL Regional Marching Band Contest, directed by Todd Burke. And next, we have representatives from the Mesquite High School band who also earned a superior division rating at UIL Regional Marching Band Contest, directed by Lance Flasowski. From Potteed High School, this is the band, members of the band, and they also earned a superior division rating at UIL Regional Marching Band Contest, directed by Tish Jones. And I believe they also got back from a trip to the state finals as well. And next is the North Mesquite High School band, who also earned a superior division rating at the UIL Regional Marching Band Contest. Scott Reeves is their director, and I believe they also competed at the state level. Also like to recognize their other directors Ben Elwell, Jake McLean, and Ashlyn Brunz. And Reagan Hall. And last but not least, is the band from West Mesquite High School, who also earned a superior division rating at the UIL Regional Marching Band Contest, directed by Jennifer Borders.
At this time, let's take like a five-minute break, so we can go out and say congratulations to everybody. So we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you. At this time, we will resume our meeting, if we can, please. I'm going to do the consent agenda. Not yet, not yet.
Oh, he's passing out stuff.
Yes, he is. This is Thanksgiving card. No, this is the tax office. All right. Yes, at this point in time, we need to address the consent agenda. This is an action item. I need a motion.
Move to approve.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there any discussion at this point in time? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. And is there one here for our audience? Okay, thank you. Also, reports of the superintendent now. But what I'm going to do is we're going to change up our agenda a little bit and bring the business portion of our agenda to the forefront. So our first one is Mr. Prado, if you will come and talk about the audit.
He might go home after this.
I know. He's not used to this.
Good evening, President Hornsby, Board Trustees. Thank you Superintendent Rivera for moving the agenda up. Thank you very much. Tonight, we have for your consideration to approve the independent audit for 2023 financial operations. Before I introduce Selena Setacetes from Whitley Penn, she will be come up here and give you a presentation. I just wanted to thank the district as a whole, the superintendent, and board members, and all the finance staff for really doing excellent job in getting all the information together for you to consider tonight. They really did a tremendous job, and I wanted just to make sure that I recognize them. And I also want to thank Whitley Penn for the work they've done. And so I will have Ms. Setacetes come up here and present to you.
Good evening, President Hornsby, Dr. Rivera, and members of the board. Thank you for having me here to present the results of the fiscal year 2023 audit. I'll take you through the process and then let you know what type of opinion the district has earned. The engagement team was Caitlin Greeney, Gabby Fellows, Brooke Fuller. I was the engagement partner. And then Tom Peterson is our quality control reviewer, who does not come on-site, but he is an unbiased third-party, a third-partner that reviews, or second-partner, excuse me, that reviews the final product before we submit to TEA and to the Federal Audit Clearinghouse. The audit process began with planning in March, April of 2023 of this year. We came on-site, began to look at internal controls from federal controls, financial reporting controls, et cetera. And I have an illustration as well that goes a little bit more into detail. We gained an understanding of those controls, tested the key controls. After the district closed its books, we came back in September 2023 and did the substantive testing, all in an effort to issue our opinion on the financial statements. The internal controls that we focused on was payroll, non-payroll, procurement, information technology, federal-specific tests for the major programs we tested, IDEA B and your ESAR funds, and then other revenues such as your child nutrition program. Because state aid is an estimate based on property tax inputs, as well as ADA or average daily attendance, we do perform test work around that area and look at your PIMS procedures as well and the controls surrounding that. We do spend a lot of time on payroll, just because it does make up a majority of your expenditures. As far as the substantive procedures are concerned, we start with analytical procedures, flux and ratio analysis. We do predictive tests. Then we move into vouching. If we need to look at actual hard copies or look at electronic bank records as well, we confirm with your third parties, such as banking institutions. And then look at what's available online. Because not all of your funding, but the majority of your funding for state aid and some of your federal funds comes through the Texas Education Agency. We're able to download that directly from TEA's website and confirm those large portions of your revenue. For property taxes, we go through the city of Mesquite and use the collection reports that are provided to us. All of this is in an effort to issue our opinion, and I am pleased to report that you have earned an unmodified opinion. We did perform our audit, not just with generally accepted auditing standards, but also generally accepted government auditing standards, or what we call the yellow book, because you do spend more than $750,000 in federal funds. And here in a minute, we'll see that you spent $128 million in federal funds. And we don't have any internal control findings related to financial reporting or any findings related to compliance. The opinion over the federal programs, this is a separate opinion from the opinion on the financial statements. So the unmodified opinion is indicating that any users of the financial statements can rely on the figures presented. And then the same goes for the federal programs. We follow the Office of Management and Budget compliance supplement that's issued every year, and that document tells us what we have to test on an annual basis. The major federal programs, as I indicated earlier, were special ed, and then your ESAR, the various tranches under ESAR. ESAR I is fully exhausted, and you're spending down ESAR II and III and some of the homeless and T-class fundings that were newer last year. You have also earned an unmodified opinion over each of these federal programs, nor do we have any, and we do not have any internal control findings for each of these federal programs. When we move into the government-wide financial statements, these are very different from your general fund, your debt service, your special revenue funds. These are on the accrual basis of accounting. It presents all of your long-lived assets, such as capital assets, as well as your long-term liabilities, like your debt. It presents the net worth of the district. The total assets were 1.4 billion with capital assets at a little over $1 billion. Then cash and investments made up $348 million. You have deferred outflows that have several components related to pension and OPEB, as well as refunded debt. The liabilities totaled $1.1 billion with bonds at $816 million. That should be million, not billion. Your net pension liability was $140 million, and the net OPEB liability was at $75 million. And I included two asterisks there because those two liabilities do not represent a cash liability. Mesquite ISD is not going to have to write a check for $140, nor $75 million. That is your proportionate share of the statewide liability, and your proportionate share is determined based on your contributions compared to all the contributions of those that participate in TRS. Overall, the net position is $300 million. What TEA also does with these TRS liabilities is they add back the net pension and OPEB liabilities because they know it does not represent that, and they'll do that for first-grading purposes. Just quickly, an overview of what the net pension liability has done. And you'll see a very drastic change from fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. Two reasons. The discount rate went from 7.25% down to 7%. Anytime the discount rate or the interest rate changes, the inverse happens to that liability. And if you also recall, in '22, now, one important thing is that these liabilities are measured as of August 31, 2022, because TRS has a year-end of August 31. So we can't wait around for them to issue. We would never be on time. So we're always a year behind with this liability. I say all that because in '22, the investment earnings were dismal. And so with the investment earnings being so poor, that liability also shot up. On the flip side, on the net OPEB liability, you'll see a drastic drop. I just said that investment earnings were terrible. They were. However, the discount rate went from 3.91% down to 1.91%, which means that liability, the opposite, excuse me, it went from 1.95% up to 3.91%. Therefore, your liability dropped. So the big culprit for this drop is the change in the discount rate, which is disclosed in your notes for OPEB. So you don't have to worry about those pension and OPEB liabilities. When we move over into the general fund, budget to actual, this is what you are accustomed to seeing. You'll see that your actual revenues totaled $409 million, and they were more than the final budgeted amounts by $7 million. Your actual expenditures of $371 million came under budget by $6 million, and then you had other financing uses, transfers out into the Capital Projects Fund of $16 million. Overall, still, your fund balance increased by $21 million, with an ending fund balance of $139 million. So within that, you have unassigned fund balance of $110 million. And of that, if we were to compare that to your expenditures that you spent in the general fund, that would equate to 108 days or 30% of your expenditures. In other words, if all revenues were to cease, that fund balance, unassigned fund balance, would last about 108 days. The recommended is 90 days or 25% of expenditures. And then the danger zone with this level of expenditures would be 30 days or 12.5%. So you don't want to be anywhere near that $30 million, and you aren't anywhere close to that. I also included that the district assigned $27 million. And something to note as well, when TEA issues its first rating, they will combine the unassigned and assigned fund balance for first-rating purposes to determine the financial health of the district. So on top of the 110, you have $27 million, which makes the district even, or as a result, it looks even healthier for first-rating purposes. When we look at your general fund revenue, budget to actual, you'll see the different components here. With local revenue being your property taxes, came in a little under by about $5 million. Your state revenues were a little bit under, and then your federal revenues exceeded the actual, your actual revenues exceeded the budget by 14. actual, your actual revenues exceeded the budget by $14 million, and that has to do with your indirect cost and school health and related services or CHARS that comes to the district on a reimbursement basis for special education students. And then you also see your other uses going out of the general fund to fund capital projects funds. When we look at the general fund revenue as a percentage of the different components as a percentage of the total, you'll see that your state aid makes up 62%. And there's always an inverse relationship between property taxes and state aid. So the more property taxes you collect, the less state aid, and vice versa. You'll also see that the $19 million in federal revenue makes up 5%, and then your property taxes at 108 or 26%. The other portion, the $21 million or 5% in blue on that pie chart, is the TRS on behalf. So there is a corresponding expenditure. So the TRS on behalf is just indicating, the state is saying, "We are contributing into TRS on behalf of the employees of Mesquite ISD." So Mesquite ISD has to reflect the $21 million as revenue and offset it as expenditures as well. It has no effect on fund balance, but it is shown separately on the financial statements. When we look at your expenditures, budget to actual, you'll see here that you were very close to the budgeted expenditures as planned, with $214 million in your instruction and related services. With that, you have your instruction and related services making up 58% of your total expenditures, and then you also have your general administration at 3%. TEA will aggregate Function 41, General Administration, and other administrative costs at the campus level to look at your overall administrative ratio, and they look for a maximum of 8%. So you don't want to be anywhere close to the 8%, and you are not. Most districts are anywhere between 2% or 3%. Most are at 3% where Mesquite ISD is. The purple shading, the $45 million or 12% is your facilities, maintenance, and operations. These are the last two slides. So we were engaged by the district on February 21, 2023. And then when we issued, around the 1st of July, we issued our charge with governance letters to you all, and also our fraud, conflict of interest, related party questionnaires. And we included certain verbiage in that letter that discussed management override and revenue recognition. This applies to all audited entities, not just to Mesquite ISD. But we alert you to that, to say, "That's always a risk," and we do perform tests to give us comfort that there are controls to address these risks. We look at your policies and methods against industry standards, and this is for amortization, depreciation. And this year, it was a new standard that you had to implement, very similar to last year with GASB-87 or leases. This year, you had to bring on your subscription-based technology arrangements. The assets and liabilities appeared on the government-wide financial statements. But the GASB wants governmental entities to report these commitments to pay for these subscription assets. So if you have multi-year commitments, they say, "Why don't you record that as a liability?" The same thing as we did with leases, whether operating or capital leases. But then you also have this intangible asset. So that was new this year. There's been a lot of changes and a lot of things that districts and all governments have had to do. So again, kudos to your district that they worked through that. There were no disagreements or difficulties with management, and I do thank your team because they were very quick to respond to all of our requests, very accommodating. And so we just thank them for helping us get through this together. The last piece of audit evidence that we received today was a management representation letter, where Mr. Prado and his team indicated that they had not withheld any information from us to perform our audit, and they've disclosed everything that we needed to know. The second item doesn't mean that you can't have friends at other audit firms. It just means that if you start to opinion shop and you don't agree with us, we'd be required to tell the board that you're reaching out to other firms. Any issues that we discuss with your management team, if you ask us technical questions, our response is not contingent on you retaining us as your auditors. Your team knows, and we know that they're risk averse, that our answer will be the most conservative, and I appreciate that about them, and I know they appreciate our style as well. Finally, the estimates that are included, as we've discussed, in these financial statements are state aid because of average daily attendance, OPEB and pension liabilities. Those are determined by a third party, and then your allowance for doubtful accounts as it relates to property tax collections. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but this is an excellent audit report. The first thing I go to is the page where they talk about unmodified, no material or significant weaknesses. Those are important to this board. So thank you for the great work you guys do on this. But I want to also thank Mr. Prado and all of his staff, as well as all of our staff throughout the district. They've done a phenomenal job on making sure they're following our controls, putting things in place, and following those processes, so that we get this kind of report for our taxpayers and for this board. So thank you very much.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you. This is an action, Adam. Mr. Seward, and a second by Mr. Carbo. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, by the same sign. Motion carried. Our next one is Mr. Prado.
Good evening again, President Hornsby, Board of Trustees, Dr. Rivera. Before you, you have an item to consider all matters incident and related to the Mesquite Independent School District variable-rate school building unlimited tax bonds, Series 2003-A, including the adoption of an order approving and authorizing the execution of amendments to the standby bond purchase agreement in relation to such bonds, which is with JP Morgan. And if you recall, a couple of months ago, we brought you some information related to refinancing the swaps. We are still on track to do that. Our goal, hopefully, is sometime in January. I would be remiss to say that Mr. Jason Hughes from Hilltop Securities is here. Oh, there you are, you moved. And Kristin Savant from Norton Rose Fulbright are also here to support this action item in case there is any questions. But basically, we're extending the contract with JP Morgan, so they will give us the flexibility until we do the refinancing of the bonds.
I move to adopt the order approving and authorizing the execution of amendments to the standby bond purchase agreement relating to the outstanding Mesquite Independent School District variable-rate school building unlimited tax bond, Series 2003-A.
I didn't hear you. Was that you? Okay. Second from Mr. Rose. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, by the same sign. Motion carried. All right. Our third item, Contract for Assessment and Collection between Dallas County, Texas and the Mesquite Independent School District.
Good evening again. Oh, well, I said that three times.
We got his picture.
I'm very consistent, that's one thing. Yes, thank you very much. We have an item for your consideration to approve the contract for assessment and collection between Dallas County, Texas, and the Mesquite Independent School District for our tax collections. As I've informed you, in some form or capacity, is that the city of Mesquite will no longer be providing this service for us. And so we're engaging in a partnership, or we're proposing to engage in a partnership with the city of Dallas County. And for the presentation, I have Mr. John Ames, who will come up here and present some information for you. And he has others with him that he might introduce.
Good evening, Board. I was really excited when we got here tonight. The room was full, and I said, "They're all here to hear about taxes. It's going to be wonderful." And then y'all cleared it out. I don't know what happened. They left. I get it, I get it. We're so popular. I'm John Ames, your Dallas County Tax Assessor/Collector. With me tonight, I have Ms. Peggy McCormick, my chief deputy, Edward Lopez, attorney with the Leinberger Law Firm, and Ms. Mary Sue Daniel, who's your liaison with the Leinberger Law Firm. So we're pleased to be able to visit with you tonight about our program. When the city of Mesquite came to us a few months ago and said, "Hey, we're closing our tax office. We'd like you to service both the city and the school district." We said, "Let's get it started." Is it to the right? Okay, perfect. So Dallas County collects for over 90 different jurisdictions. We collect for four countywide entities, 23 cities, 10 school districts, and 50 special and public improvement districts. As such, we collect, and through your contract, and this is all in your contract, we will calculate the no new revenue and the voter approval rate. On your behalf, we provide print-ready truth and taxation documents, all those ready for the newspaper. As you know, the truth and taxation process is very difficult. There's a short timeframe, and so we provide all that documentation to you. We mail and collect your property taxes online, by mail and over the phone or over the counter. We manage and facilitate installment payment agreements on your behalf, and we apply tax exemptions and value changes when we receive them from the appraisal district. We also issue refunds on your behalf for erroneous and supplemental adjustments. Payments accepted through our office, of course, we always prefer that people do things online. That's the easiest way to do it. I tell my taxpayers all the time, "Go home and pay your taxes in your pajamas in the middle of the night. That'd be great." You can certainly mail in your tax payment. We provide an envelope for you when we mail your statement to you. You can pay by phone, both in English and Spanish, or in person at any one of our seven locations. And I think that's really important to stress, that we have seven locations across the county. Mesquite citizens don't have to use the Mesquite location. They can use any one of our locations across the county. We also take all forms of major credit cards. We do online e-checks at no fee whatsoever. We have some of the lowest convenience fees in the state of Texas, and that's because we can leverage those fees with the amount of money that we collect. Payment plan options. This is where our partners at the Leinberger Law Firm come in and assist us. We truly are a team between the two, the county tax office and the law firm. We offer over 65 and disabled payment veteran installment payment plans. We offer homeset payment plans, which have been really important the last few years through COVID. We also do informal payment plans, where you can begin paying October 1st. Always remind my citizens, pay as much as you can, as often as you can, when the lottery. Come see us first, please. They don't always do that. And then, of course, there's formal payment plans, and those are the signed agreements with our delinquent collection firm, Leinberger. These are our locations all across the county. Right there in the center, you'll see the newly renovated records building. That building was 101 years old when we moved out of it five years ago, actually, seven years ago now. They did a five-year renovation. We've been back in it for two years. On the top there, you'll see that we have a facility in North Dallas. To the left, you'll see we have one in Grand Prairie and in South Dallas. On the very bottom, that's our Oak Cliff location. Top right is our Garland location, and that last one is our Mesquite location. Now, I know you're looking at that building going, "That looks like the crummiest old building of all of these." It is. And that's actually a color picture, I'm sad to say. The good news is, we're moving to a brand-new facility. So Dallas County and the city of Mesquite did a land swap, and they'll be taking over our old facility there. And we are actually moving down the street right next to the fire station, and that will happen in the fall of 2024. We're very excited about that, by the way, extremely excited. Since taking office 15 years ago, we've either renovated and/or completely rebuilt all the tax offices in Dallas County. So it is a huge accomplishment. Our 2023 tax statements, we mail out over 800,000 tax statements on behalf of our entities. Again, that's all of our cities and schools and special districts that we work with. Ms. McCormick and I, and several of our administrative team, actually QC our printers right here in town. We make sure that our contract with our printing company is here locally, because we want to be on-site to make sure that everything is accurate and correct before it gets mailed out. We have a dedicated taxpayer relations and customer care center. We're the largest call center in all of Dallas County. Over 23 full-time and four part-time representatives that both speak English and Spanish are there in our call center. They answer calls, they resolve inquiries, both related to property taxes and motor vehicles. They also maintain and update our tax office website. Speaking of our website, we've got a great website that people can go to, 365-247. On that website, there's some key things. Right as you first pop open that website, there's the two things that people come to us most for, and that is to get their vehicle registered and to pay their property taxes. So we encourage them to do that right up front. In addition, you'll see it says a C branch wait times. You can click on that button, and you can see specifically what are you going to the tax office for and which location. Those locations will actually tell you what the wait time is for a registration, for a title, or for a property tax payment, and you may just decide to just do it online anyway, which is what we're wanting you to do. Now, when it comes to reporting, I know this will be very important to Mr. Prado and his team. I'm going to put my glasses on, because this little screen right up front here is a little bit small. The largest report you see on here on the right is what you'll see on a regular basis. This is the monthly report that comes to every entity we collect for. You'll see it's signed and notarized by me, and it breaks down all the collections that we've done for you, both delinquent, current. It breaks down the fees that were paid to the law firm. It also breaks down the INS and MNO portion of those taxes for you. In addition, we give various reports throughout the year. We'll do a courtesy invoice. We'll give daily reports that come to the entity that shows them how much money we've collected. We do the top 10 reports. We do the levy calculation report. There's multiple reports. And the really nice thing about this is, after I took office, we developed a program where every entity we collect for has a specific login. So Mr. Prado and his team will receive a login. They go to our website, and they can download and look at these reports anytime they want. They're organized in folders on daily, weekly, monthly, and annual reports, so they can store them there, or they can download them and keep them on their side and refer back to them anytime they need to, especially when they're dealing with those auditors. So what does the timeline look like for this? Well, the timeline is such. October to December, we're going to get our inter-local agreements, our contract approved by both the city and the school district, and we're going to start having a conversation with the city of Mesquite about the conversion and the questionnaires. In January and February, we're going to start swapping sample files back and forth. The vendor that works with the city of Mesquite and their software company, we work with on a regular basis. We've converted many of their clients before over to Dallas County, and so they'll start sending data files over. They'll also start doing a data cleanup. We've got a whole list of things that must be done before we get the data over, because we want to make sure the data is clean as possible before it comes in. And then we'll start balancing those files, and our goal is to go, March 1st, to go live, which means about the last week in February, the city of Mesquite will stop collecting altogether. And there'll be a timeframe there, three or four days, where nobody will collect. They won't collect, and we won't collect. If people need to pay their taxes, they'll simply drop them off. We'll hold them for about a week while we transition all the data. We balance it up, we bring it up. We bring it up on March 1st, then we'll accept those payments. Of course, they'll be accepted for the date that they were received, and we'll apply those to the new system going forward. Notices. There was a question early on about how would the public know about this? Well, in Dallas County, we can certainly put an insert. This is a sample of an insert that we had put in for one of our other entities that we brought on, Valwood Improvement District. And so that could go into every single one of your October tax statements that just says, "Hey, guess what? We've partnered with the county now. You're not going to get two bills anymore. You're going to get one, and it's going to include everything in it." We'll also put a press release out there. We'll put it on our website and social media. And of course, we'll notify all the mortgage companies throughout the country that pay on behalf of Mesquite citizens. Now, what we've asked the city of Mesquite to do and Mesquite ISD to do is also put something in the water bills, any kind of newsletter articles that you have, any kind of community engagement. We think it's important to do that, a press release, and any kind of website or social media presence that you have. What are the costs of these services? The costs are fairly reasonable. In fact, my commissioners always wonder why I don't charge more than this. It's $1.40 per parcel. And so no matter how many times we have to mail that out, say I have to mail a bill out to you, and then somebody doesn't pay it, and I have to mail a delinquent notice, and they don't pay it, and I have to mail another delinquent notice, we don't charge you for every mailing. One time a year, we charge you $1.40 per parcel. And so if you send us over 40,000, 50,000 parcels, we're going to multiply that out. We're going to send Mr. Prado a bill, and then we're going to collect that cost in there. I don't believe you have any out-of-county parcels, do you? You're all within Dallas County. And of course, the public improvement districts, those are for the cities, and so you guys don't have any of those. And Leinberger has graciously waived the cost of conversion. They do own the software company that we use, ACT System. And so because they work with us, and they're our partners, and they're also your partners, they've waived that cost of conversion for both parties. So thank you, Leinberger, always.
Thank you very much.
Now, I'd be remiss to come up here as your tax assessor and not tell you just a little bit about motor vehicle, because this is one of the other services that we offer in the offices that will be collecting your property taxes. And so as the second-largest county in the state of Texas, the ninth-largest county in the entire country, we register over 2.1 million vehicles right here in Dallas County. 10% of all the vehicles and the roads in the state of Texas are right here in Dallas County. I know that explains some of the traffic around here, right? So we also process 650,000 title transfers. So anytime you buy a vehicle, whether it be at a dealership or an individual-to-individual sale, that title transfer comes through the tax office. And of course, we provide disabled placards for any citizens that name. That's the team. I have 287 employees. So I believe the city of Mesquite had three employees in their tax office. So for a little bit less money than you're probably paying now, you get an additional 200,000. 284 employees at your service. Absolutely. Yes, sir. I knew there was a question coming, Mr. S.
Well, I had a first comment. So you're to blame for reregistering all these vehicles. You could not register them, and we won't have the problem. Is that right?
Well, probably get a ticket, but you know, that's up to you, sir. Completely up to you.
I do have a couple of questions.
And you can register online, too.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I do have a couple of questions. I had a bunch, actually. I asked Mr. Prado a bunch of questions. He already gotten answers.
Wonderful.
You know, one of the things that we, I know his staff looks at and we look at, when we start preparing our budget next year, they're looking for data.
Sure.
Early. Will they have access to that data early?
Absolutely. So remember, the appraisal district must certify the tax roll on July 25th. And so we can't do anything before we get that certified roll from them, right? But months before July 25th, we'll be working with your finance department to get the data we need from them, so the minute we get the certified rolls, we can start working on those effective tax rate calculations, those voter approval rates, those no new revenue rates, so that we can start generating reports back and forth. Now, remember, we calculate that for about 45 different entities, so we're constantly working. I've got an entire team that works on that truth and taxation stuff.
Well, I was just concerned, because I know that we had, working with the city, we had access to get that data early to start doing some estimates and projections.
Well, the city couldn't get it any earlier than we get it, because it all comes out the same day.
I like to hear that.
Yeah.
The second is, you covered customer service.
Yes, sir.
And I know that a lot of people call that, but the customer service I wanted to ask you about is, when Mr. Prado and his staff needs to contact, do they get access quickly on that customer service?
They actually have a special email address called Tax Entity Help that they email directly, and it goes to three different people, including Ms. McCormick, and so that we can address their situation, whatever questions they have. They'll find that they probably get more communication from us than they really want. And before you know it, they'll get in a roll and a rhythm of where to go look for the reports. If they've got a question about something, they can reach out to us anytime we're happy to assist them.
Thank you. That's all I have.
What would be the downside of the joint tax office that we've had for many, many years with the city of Mesquite? I'm curious to know, the city of Mesquite initiated this request.
Correct.
What challenges do you anticipate?
None whatsoever, to be honest with you. No, I mean, we collect for over 90 different jurisdictions. Since taking office 15 years ago, we've probably brought 20 different jurisdictions on board. So it's something we're very used to doing, we're very accustomed to doing. You can certainly say with the city of Mesquite, but I don't think they're gonna have a tax office anymore, so.
No, no. They're not going to.
It would be difficult.
I'm curious to know, though, in Dallas County, are there any other school districts and cities that have a joint tax office like we have?
You're the last standing joint tax office. In fact, I was the tax assessor of one of those joint tax offices. I was the Soto City and School Tax Assessor for about eight years before I became the Dallas County Tax Assessor. Sunnyvale used to have a joint office. We took that one over. Capel used to have a joint office. We took that one over. There are no more joint offices. In fact, after...
In all those cases, the school tax office, the city was the one who collected and chose to give up the collection, so the school had, you know, didn't have a place to live.
Absolutely. In fact, with the Capel Joint Tax Office, the city said, we don't want to collect for the school anymore, so I said, well, y'all come on over here, and they said, no, no, you just take the school district. And we said, okay. So we took the school district, and a year later, we got one of these. Can we come over, too? They said, yeah, come on over. So we brought them over about a year later. It's better to do it together, for sure. After we bring on the city of Mesquite and Mesquite ISD, there will only be about five local jurisdictions left in Dallas County that still may know a local tax office.
But no joint.
Yeah, and there's no joint any left.
Well, thank you very much for your report.
Absolutely. We're so glad to be here.
It's wonderful how to face in a name to that check, you know, that I write to you.
Yes, and I'd be happy to take any checks back if you have one for me tonight.
You write us checks.
Oh. Mr. Prado, that's not true. We will actually, you know, it's interesting. People say to me all the time, why do we write the checks to John or Ames? Why do we have to make it to you? Well, there's two reasons. Number one is, I have personal liability over all the funds I collect until the time is I transfer them to who they belong to. And so because of that, the money that we collect today will be balanced tomorrow morning and be wired out by end of day tomorrow. So we flip money as quickly as possible, because I don't want it in my name, right? I need it in your bank account, not in my bank account.
Yes, yes.
And of course, the second reason is, I'm elected, and I need you to remember my name.
Yeah, they do.
Absolutely. Mr. Lopez, please do.
I just wanted to add, I've worked with John the whole time that he's been tax assessor collector.
The microphone.
Oh.
I thought my voice would carry.
People watching.
Absolutely. I've worked with Mr. Ames the whole time he has been the tax assessor collector. I'm in meetings at Dallas County on behalf of all the clients that Leinbarger represents. As you guys know, Grimes-Leinbarger, we have our office down the street on Main Street. We're still gonna have our presence here. For the citizens of Mesquite, in terms of customer service, they can come to our office at any time, get the information they need, whether it's about delinquent taxes or just taxes in general, we're always gonna help them. So that part of it's not gonna change. And I've seen that transition happen many times over the 29 years that I've been doing this, and it's been seamless. So I don't anticipate anything, and whatever changes are made are gonna be done, kind of behind the scenes with the team, and it really will be a seamless transition. So we're excited that it's gonna be a consolidated effort.
Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is an action item. Mr. Carbo, is there a second? Second, Mr. Bingham. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
All right. All right. Do we have, who do we, no, wait, we don't need this right here. There's an action item. Okay, all right, okay, all right. We go to our effectiveness reports. Ms. Tanton.
Nothing on personnel?
Uh-uh, nothing on personnel. Professional learning. You guys are awesome. I just started, start you out.
Well, thank you. That's a nice way to start.
Yeah. I'm involved with you guys in several different ways.
For many years. That's right. Right, well, thank you for that. Good evening. I'm so happy to be here with you tonight to share about some of our programs. And we've submitted our report, and we discuss all of those and some effectiveness data for each of our programs in that report. But tonight, we want to highlight and celebrate three of our biggest programs, all around one of our big rocks, which is teacher recruitment and retention. And so you're gonna hear from my amazing team, Jennifer Morris and Jennifer Heiser, tonight as they speak about a couple of the programs. And so I'm gonna introduce Jennifer Heiser, our coordinator.
We are working to fan the flame of teaching and learning in Mesquite ISD through many pathways of filling the teacher pipeline. The excitement and interest at the MEPA meeting about the pathways of meeting people where they are and helping them to take on the meaningful and challenging role of teaching in Mesquite ISD was tangible last week. Pace instructors fill teaching vacancies, doing all the things a teacher does while completing their college degrees with the guidance of an experienced pace trainer. Dr. Susan Williams, our partnership director between Texas A&amp;M Commerce and Mesquite ISD, trains, encourages, challenges, and leads our largest group of teacher residents. And of all the unexpected challenges of becoming a teacher in Mesquite ISD, you might just find yourself in the spotlight at ABC News.
I know.
You may recall approving a program called Para to Teacher a couple of years ago. We have branded that partnership with TeachWorthy and Indiana Wesleyan University to help paraprofessionals fill teaching vacancies while earning their bachelor's degree and certifications. Pace, Pathways Advancing to Certified Educators. We currently have 58 pace instructors filling vacancies between the two cohorts at 36 campuses, covering a wide range of grades and contents as shown in the data. But the experience these phenomenal humans bring to their role as teachers shows that they are doing their very best in every aspect of teaching and learning. And we are so proud to celebrate our first two Indiana Wesleyan University graduates as they continue their work in the classroom but transition their title from pace instructor to teacher. Really so exciting. Another pathway to fill the pipeline with excellent teachers is a rebranding of our longstanding tradition of teacher candidates, training teacher candidates as team, training and employing education majors in Mesquite ISD. TEA is working to designate the uniqueness of the year-long training program of the teacher residency, and student teachers are also a valuable component of our program because most universities only have one semester of the on-the-job training. This year, we are paying for this amazing on-the-job training and recruiting opportunity. The application, recommendation, and interview process for both the students and the cooperating teachers created many beautiful partnerships that will hopefully lead to full-time teachers for many years to come. We are proud to be hosting teacher residents and student teachers from several universities and multiple certifications. This is a very brief overview of the work we are doing to fill the teacher pipeline with Mesquite-trained candidates. And now, I'll pass the torch to Jennifer Morris to share how we support these new teachers.
Thank you, Jennifer, and good evening, Board. It's good to be with you this evening. It's not every week that your department is in the national news for their programs that are so near and dear to their hearts. So we've had a lot of smiles this week, and we're just happy to be here to share more about the work that we're doing. We are continuing the great work of our New Teacher Academy, our two-year program. Just to show you where we're at this year, you can see our participants. We have 256 participants in year one of our program. Each of those new teachers receives a paid campus mentor across all of our campuses, which is a really unique part of our program. It is a one-to-one mentorship, and we're seeing great things happen with those mentors. The second year of our program, right now, we have 205 second-year teachers that are going through New Teacher Two. And so a little over 450 first- and second-year teachers who are receiving support this year in our program. What I have to say to you is, I just, I can't brag enough about all of the departments across our district that are fully committed to this work and this support. There's no hesitation that within any department, they are like, yes, how can we help support these new teachers? What can we do? And so it's just a team effort for supporting this group, and it's exciting to be a part of. In fact, districts are asking me all the time to share what are we doing to support new teachers, and I'm like, how long do you have? Because we have a lot going on, a lot of great things happening, and so it's exciting to get to share that work. The reality is, in our district this year, this is where we are with new teachers. A little over 55% of our teaching staff this year has five or less years of teaching experience. That has impact for our classrooms and for our students, and so we know the need for support is there. And what I'm excited about is this newest layer of support that we have been able to provide this year, which is through our teacher support specialists. I know you've heard a little bit about that. It's off-the-ground, it's running. We are so excited about the work that these folks have been able to do. We hired 80 certified teachers, all levels of experience, all levels of backgrounds, elementary, middle, and high school, to support our newest teachers. They are working in classrooms and campuses across the district, making very specialized plans for how they support those new teachers, and we're seeing great things come out of that support. This is very unique. There is not another district that has a support system like this. So we are getting also a lot of questions about, how are you doing this? What does this look like? We're excited that you were able to commit Esser funding to this work. This year, I will tell you, we are hearing lots of great things, but also we are seeing a lot of great outcomes in the data. I can tell you, in the first quarter of the school year, the first nine weeks, we have less new teacher resignations this year than we have in the past two years. Okay? That, I know there's a lot involved in that, but when we see teachers staying, new teachers staying and making it, that's a big deal. And we feel like this layer of support is one of the things that's contributing to those numbers. I wish that I could tell you all the stories and all of the conversations that I've heard from new teachers who are saying, Ms. Morris, I wouldn't have made it. I wouldn't have made it this far if it hadn't been for my TSS. I would have turned in my resignation. I would have walked out the door and handed in my keys. Not only are they providing great classroom instruction, support, instructional support, but they're also providing emotional support and just knowing that someone's in their corner that wants to see them be successful. And so hearing lots of great things from our teachers, but also from our campus staff, our campus leaders, our mentors, just really on repeat. There's no way that we can provide the level of support at the campus level that you guys are able to do with the TSSs, and it has helped really kind of spread out the support and the time they're able to spend together. And so we're excited about this group. Like I said, they're serving over 246 teachers. Again, that number and those teachers change. As a teacher is doing really well, new teachers are moved into that support for that TSS. And so it's a very flexible model, and we're, again, we're seeing lots of great impact across the district with these folks, and we're looking forward to what the year looks like ahead with them. So at this time, I'm gonna turn it over back to her, to Ms. Tanton, who's gonna talk about what's going on with our experienced teachers.
Hello. All right. Well, do you remember six or seven years ago when we started talking about a little program called E-Tip? Remember? Six or six, we're in our seventh year now, and it is going strong. So I'm excited to share some good data about that program. Initially, started to really boost teacher retention, and it's done that, but it's also improving teacher practice. And so I have some information to share with you about that as well. We'll start with participation. We have approximately 32% of our teachers that are eligible right now are participating in E-Tip, either as a scholar or as, which means they've graduated and are receiving the funds, or they are participating in the classroom right now, so, in the classwork. So they, our participation is great, about a third of our experienced teachers. Retention is also showing improvement for those teachers. We, in your report, you'll see, we had quite a bit of qualitative data that we gathered from our participants. We had about 340 of the 500 respond to the survey, so really high survey results. But the open-ended responses that they had were tremendous. In terms of retention, we did find that 94% of them say that they are choosing to stay in the classroom because of E-Tip, that that is contributing to why they've remained in Mesquite ISD and stayed in E-Tip. So to us, that's the best kind of data and feedback that we can get. Oops. Okay, teacher performance continues to shine for our E-Tip teachers in every dimension of T-Test, which is how our teachers are evaluated. During '22 and '23, they scored higher in every dimension than teachers who have not participated in E-Tip. And so lots of reasons for that, but we think that that shows that it's improving practice and culture, as well as retaining some of those experienced teachers who are successful and more successful with our students. So, we were excited to see that. This year, we even have, when I stood in front of you, every time I've had an effectiveness report since we started ETIP, we've talked about data, and we've talked about all of the great conversations we have with folks about ETIP, with principals and with participants, that's still our best data. That's still where we get our best information. But we now have enough participants to be able to measure student performance as related to our ETIP teachers and to measure how they're doing in terms of growing students. We want to look at, and so, what we've done is, Dr. Tim Newville is one of our newest district scholars, and he has been gathering some data for us on those areas where we have enough ETIP scholars to measure predicted growth according to, and then the actual resulting growth that students have shown. So, in '22, '23, our ETIP teachers, all, in all of those areas where we had enough teachers to have a sample and to measure this data, in every one of those areas, they showed more growth than expected. And so, the state predicts, based on how a student did before, how they'll, whether they'll, how they'll do on the next one, and all of, in all of those areas, on the average, our students outperformed what the state had predicted for them in our ETIP scholars' classrooms. So, we're really pleased with that, and we knew it. We knew it was improving practice, but now, we have a little bit of data to support that as well with student outcomes. So, thank you from the bottom of our hearts for supporting this program and for being our cheerleaders all throughout. All of our programs would not be here if it weren't for the support of this district. We, 30 years in, I know that this is, this district has always committed to professional learning, and we really appreciate all of your support, all of your encouragement, and you're saying yes to everything we want to do.
You do.
You tend to say yes. So, that's nice. That's nice. Do you have any questions for any of us that we can answer?
We'd share our secrets with other districts.
Okay. Listen, we go to some regional meetings with other professional learning people, and Jennifer Morris over here, I mean, she'll be in the, she's stopped going to the new teacher group because they, she doesn't get anything from anyone else. She gives all of her information away, so.
Right. Well, that means we're a star.
That's right.
That's right. Yeah, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
You bet. Very well done.
So, I'm going to talk to you about assessment and accountability as we know it today. We know that things change, and we're still not done looking at last year, but we're going to muddle through. A lot of what I have to present with, to you, you've already seen from Dr. Fields in September, but I've added in some things that I've learned since then and that we've learned from the state, so, we'll get started. First of all, these are the topics that we'll cover. We're going to look back at the STAR refresh and how the test was reconfigured and that impact, along with some trend data in CCMR and comparison with our five-year Meets and Masters. Then, we'll look at district and state comparisons, and then, what we're doing to address any areas of need. So, the first thing that I want to talk to you about, the biggest impact we've seen is the redesign of the STAR test and the inclusion of writing. So, prior to 2023, students were only assessed by the state in fourth grade, seventh grade, and on the English one and two exams. That has changed dramatically. They are doing short constructed responses and multi-part questions, writing in reading language arts, social studies, and science. The biggest impact, though, that we've seen is on that extended constructed response, which I'm going to call ECR going forward, okay? And so, that is a longer, what we, you know, we grew up thinking it's the five-paragraph essay. That's what students need to learn to write. That is not how they are assessed with this latest configuration of writing. So, I'll talk you through what that looks like. So, if you'll join me kind of on a deep dive for just a minute, we're going to go in the weeds. I do think it's important for everyone to understand how this part of the RLA test is scored and the impact that it has on the individual students and overall accountability. So, first thing, students, they read a passage and they respond to a prompt. They're asked to explain something. Prior to 2023, the kinds of question they would see was, tell us about a time when you overcame an obstacle and how that made you feel, or who's a hero in your life and why? And so, very personal experience is what they wrote to. That is not the case anymore. They read a passage, they're asked to explain something based on the passage, and then share their ideas. So, the next thing that happens is, two different readers read the essay and score it from zero to five for a total of 10 points. Here's where it gets a little different. Three points of that five comes from the organization and development of their ideas. So, if they can't address the prompt or don't write a good thesis, the state likes to call it a controlling idea, a good statement where they understand the prompt and can explain it, they're going to struggle. They can score from zero to three on this part. The other two points come from conventions, the grammar, punctuation, the spelling, and in a lot of ways, that's a rethink for our teachers. They're used to getting the comma in the right place and spelling all the words correctly. That is secondary now. The thoughts that they put on paper, the way they understand the prompt, and how they explain and expand their idea is what really matters. And this was the big learning that we had. If students don't get at least one point out of that three, they don't get two points for convention. They get zero. So, if they write 10 wonderful sentences that don't address the prompt, that don't have anything to do with the topic, and there's not a comma out of place or a misspelled word, they're going to get zero. And that was a hard thing for, okay, so, we know what we need to focus on, and I don't think it's a bad thing, but we need to know that that's what we're going toward. How students express themselves, how they understand a question, break it down, and provide that evidence in their writing is what's key. And spelling and commas, important but secondary at this point.
Question.
Yes.
So, how many students in the state will take this particular type of test? How many people are reviewing this?
Well, live people or...
Is it live people or is this computer-generated?
What we've, what we've heard going forward is, 25% may be graded by computer. That's still up in the air, but this last round, we're graded by live people. Two different readers read students' writings and scored them, and as long as their scores were within a point of each other, then those scores stood and were added together to get the total of 10, up to 10.
Is that by a thing?
In some ways, but the consistency comes from, it's a passage, and they're all writing to the same prompt. In prior years, when it says, tell me about a hero in your life, their writings could vary greatly. So, in some ways, the rubric is easier to follow when they're all addressing the same prompt, but they do have a very specific rubric. I didn't want to bore you with the details of a zero to a three, but there are some very specific things to look for. I would agree, yes.
Good thing professional learning is sitting in here, isn't it?
Yes.
Here in all of this.
And teaching and learning, too.
That's right. Amen.
So, in the past, most students got some partial credit. They wrote something. They got, you know, limited response. It was low, but developed, so, there were lots of ways they could get a few points, but now, there's a lot of ways they get a zero. Just because they get a zero doesn't mean they wrote nothing. In some cases, that's true, but in a lot of cases, they just didn't address the prompt. So, here's what, a lot of what we're seeing. If they only wrote a sentence, even if it was a well-understood sentence, but it doesn't have any evidence from the text, and there's no real development, they're not going to get the one of three points, which means they won't get the two either. The second one, the writing from personal opinion or summary, that's how we train them the last decade, write from your experience, tell how you feel. They don't want to know the feelings unless that's the question, and that's not usually the question. If they copy the prompt or text, which a lot of our kids did, they restated the question, but they didn't answer it. Or they took text evidence, but it wasn't connected to anything. So, we saw a lot of that. And then, just not responding to the prompt at all. I ask you about this, and you tell me about that. You can write 10 great sentences, but if it's not about the prompt, they don't get any credit for that. So, we saw a lot of students that got zeros, and that was not unique to Mesquite ISD. That's, that was a statewide thing, which we will look at.
Can you hear that? I'm sure you've heard of the topic of the ESR. What did they say?
There, we're all in this. It is a change, and it's a change that, at least, I feel like I kind of came in late to the party, so, I don't know what we knew a year ago now about how this was redesigned and how it would be scored. It feels like this was something that came maybe after we got going. I see, yes, I see Jennifer nodding, that if we had known this time last year how we were going to be evaluated, we could have addressed that going forward. So, what we know now, and we've made a lot of changes already to address those situations.
So, it's the same all over the state, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
People sign up to be the creators so that they can read the RNS.
Yeah.
So, people have a combination score.
Nothing like a little gotcha, is there? Just a little.
That's what it feels like. So, then, I want to show you just those 10 points, how it impacts the overall score of the RLA test. So, you'll see there, that's the weight of that one question. In elementary, there's only 52 possible points on the test, and 10 of those come from that one essay, and you didn't write correctly, so, you got zero. That's 19% of the overall score. And let's not forget, we, besides extended constructed, we also have the short constructed and the multi-part questions that are in RLA, Science, and Social Studies, although they don't necessarily show up in every grade level every year, but the ECR will be there every year, and that's the value that it has. So, I wanted you to see how MISD and Region 10 did. These are the percentages of students that got no credit for their ECR. And I want to remind you, it doesn't mean they didn't write anything. They just didn't address the prompt the way the state expected. So, I'll let you look at that for a moment. You can see the lower grade levels were the lowest, and as they got older, the numbers got better, but we're still having, you know, 29% of our high school kids that got no credit on whatever they wrote. And I read a lot of what our students wrote, and some of them, probably my favorite typed, my keyboard is broken. And my thought is, well, you typed, my keyboard is broken, so, it's probably not. So, other students, other students wrote several sentences, and they were all over the place. They wrote like a book report. They summarized what they read, but they didn't address the prompt. So, that's where we know the work is. And what we've said is, it's hard to help a student improve their writing. They have to write a little bit. They have to get some feedback. They have to refine their work, and it's a process, but it's no different than playing a sport or playing an instrument. The more you practice it, it is a skill that they can develop. So, kind of our objective is, they need to write a little a lot in every classroom, not just in their English classes, but every classroom. In a math class, explain how you got the answer to this problem. We need our students thinking about their writing and doing more writing a little bit every day in all subjects.
I mean, that's straight down the line. You do well. What are those groups there?
Other districts include a little of this before the test, or...
We brought out training starting basketball.
What's that?
We brought out training starting basketball.
Okay.
So, so, I see like ELC tip, it's 29%. Does that mean that 71% did?
They got at least a one.
Well, good.
At least a one.
At least a one.
Out of five.
I mean, I want to turn that around and say, at least, you know, 71% of our students...
Got something.
Got something.
Yes. And they probably didn't get a one because two people scored it, so, they probably got a two would be the lowest. But, yeah, we had, the impact that we, the impact really is on getting no points. And so, students who earned nothing really were in a, it was difficult for them to pass the test at all, and almost impossible to hit the master's level, which is really what we're shooting for, not just approaches, but we need to get them to Meets or Masters. Let me stop here. Do you, any other questions about reading or the ECR, the redesign, before I move into some other changes? That, to me, was the most impactful that I, I know that y'all haven't necessarily seen, but we're all aware of where we are and what the task is. And a lot of times, it's just, I now know what the rules are to the game, and we know how to help our students get where they need to be, so, we move forward.
Well, that's the crux of it. We didn't know all the rules back then. Had we known that, we could have had everything in place to start getting them to that point of write a little a lot.
Yes.
So, it's a matter of the game they're playing down in Austin.
Correct.
Well, but the thing, too, and the way I look at it is, that's what these testing are for, that we're, we're giving, we're trying to find out if our kids are looking at a paragraph and understanding and seeing, they could really translate that into a thought of what the objective is or whatever. So, we know that we're on the right path, and if we correct this, this is what we should be doing anyway.
Yeah. I don't think this is a bad way to assess a student. We just would like to know early enough that we can prepare for that.
Make it better. Right.
Right.
Exactly right, because it's about the kids. Okay.
Thought you were going to say something.
I was.
Okay. Okay, so, we're going to switch gears then and look at another thing that's changed. For, so, Domain Three, as you know, that's the federal accountability portion. We're looking at academic achievement and growth and reading and math, along with CCMR, graduation rates, how our emergent bilinguals are performing on Tellpass. And from '22 to '23, you'll see what the difference is on those two areas. The biggest change is from 14 groups, so, every individual racial and ethnic group plus sped, slept, all divided out, now, there's just four groups. We're looking at all students, so, it's the whole campus. It's each campus is the lowest, two performing racial or ethnic groups, so, that can vary from school to school. And then, what's called the high-focus group, which is a combination of your sped students, your emergent bilingual, and your highly mobile, which are your homeless, your foster, and your military-connected. So, those are all grouped together. And before, it was yes or no, you hit the target or you didn't. Now, you can get close to the target. Depending on how far you move them forward, you can get up to four points, which is a change. The other big change is the group size went down from 25 to 10. So, as long as you have at least 10 students, that group can count in terms of accountability. CCMR is another area where we've seen a big impact. We know the industry-based certifications, there's a cap put on those that are being sunset, but the bigger change really is the cut points. Went from a 60 to be an A school in that area to an 88. That's a pretty big jump, and I think it's because they were seeing a lot of schools were figuring out how to maximize those points, get students all their CCMR, and you know all the ways they do that, SAT, ACT, AP, dual credit, industry-based certifications, TSI. There's plenty of ways that students can show that they are CCMR-ready, and we're working to maximize those as well. And you can see even the impact of them. It hits all three domains. CCMR will be in each of those three areas. Okay, so, this is a lot. Let me break this down for you, because I know that's, it's a lot of things to look at. This is what just got released on the 31st, and if the state ever gets around to actually being able to release A-through-F ratings, this is what they're going to use. So, I wanted you to see where we were versus where we finally are. If you look up in the, just the top-left corner for elementary, and that first column, that's where we were for the five years from 2018 to 2022. That's the number that you had to hit to hit an A, B, C, or D. That second middle column is where they were before they saw scores and saw how low some schools were performing. So, column three, which says 22, 23B, that's where we've landed. So, if you notice, in elementary and middle school, they did lower the cut point from 85 to 80, or 76 to 71. High school stayed relatively the same, though. And if you look down in that second portion at the bottom, the way that translates, if you look at the bottom right or the bottom left where you've got elementary rating distributions, had they left the cut points where they had them, 40% of the elementary schools in Texas would have been an F school. That's what you see there, that red 40. Above that, 19% would have been a D school. So, the last column in that section shows where we really are. So, 15% are the F schools, again, predicted. If that ever comes to pass, that's where, that's where schools will land, and then that 21%. So, really, what they did was they compressed that number, and it didn't necessarily add a whole lot more to the top, but it made a bigger set of Cs and Bs. But that's where, if it comes to pass, this is what we're looking at now. So, there was a bit of compromise after seeing how schools were performing overall. The other one is Domain Three, federal accountability. You'll notice that for As and Bs, there's been no change, but they did change the DNC to lessen than total number, if we ever get those ratings as well. I will say that on the 16th, we should be receiving, I say we, districts will be given access to whether or not there are any schools that did not meet the standard for Domain Three, and what that would mean is, the bottom 5% of schools across the state in that school type, so, elementaries across the state, if you're in the bottom 5%, then you'll fall under federal accountability, comprehensive support, and so, we'll know that on the 16th, but I don't anticipate that being the case for any of our schools. Okay, so, let's look at some, some data. Now, I will say, this is stuff you've seen before. Didn't really add a whole lot to this, so, if I move too quickly, you can slow me down, but I know you've heard it, and I don't know how much you want to hear it fall again. The first thing are the percent of our seniors who met CCMR by accountability year, and what that means is, that last column, 2023, we've calculated that with some tools that we have. That's not released yet because, you know, that's a lagging indicator. So, but what I wanted you to see was the progression of our students from 2018 through 2023. We're moving in the right direction. If the cut point stayed at 60 for an A, all of our schools would be A schools in terms of CCMR. So, we know we have some work to do just to hit that target again. Often, think of the Olympics. I'm going to digress a bit. 1976, Nadia Comaneci scored all those 10s, blew the scale, didn't know what to do. What did they end up doing? They restructured the whole way that scoring is done now, because too many people were hitting a 10, and that's not okay. So, it's a very similar feeling, right? We, yeah, we figured out how to be perfect, so, now, we're going to have to restructure it all, so. Showing my age, too, right? Okay, so, these next several slides, here's what I want you to focus on. That middle yellow bar... That middle yellow bar, that was the year after COVID. So you're going to see kind of a V shape. We were up here, COVID hit us, we're bouncing back. Primarily, that's what you need to see. That's the shape. What you're looking at here is math scores, meets, and these really are what we're calling apples to apples, meaning the test didn't really change. There was an inclusion of writing that impacted math. So those should have been, it's a fair comparison to look at 2022 to 2023 in terms of math. And these are students who met the standard. The next one, I'm going to talk a bit about seventh grade, just to remind you why the seventh grade looks so low. These are students who mastered, so they, they, they met the standard and went beyond. You'll notice that seventh grade looks really low, and that's because if we have seventh grade students who are strong enough in math, we need them to do the eighth grade curriculum and take the eighth grade STAR test. Because when they get to eighth grade, we need them to take Algebra I. If they don't do Algebra I then, they'll never get to calculus. They need four years of high school math before they can take calculus. So they either double up or take something in the summer, which we don't advise, or we accelerate them faster. So the only students left taking the grade seven test were students who were on level, grade seven, and probably not the strongest math students. And there's not a great number of them. A lot of them are in that, in those eighth grade numbers. The next section is for reading, language arts. This one is not a fair comparison. So that orange bar, the fourth one, that was 2022, when there was not writing on the three through eight test. The last bar, with the inclusion of writing, you'll see that we did see a dip in those areas, but also a bounce back from where we were. So we're kind of still wanting to see where we were, COVID hit, and we're bouncing back. On masters, though, this is where that writing really hits us. So for high school English, one and two, if the student got no credit for the ECR, they got a zero, they had to get every other question right to get masters. So that's where we really see the impact of students not performing on writing. So even if we can get them from a zero to a two and then to a four, then we'll be moving them in the right direction. But that, that getting zero on that was really impactful in that area. For science, you know, we only test three areas, grade five, eight, and biology. And there was a bit of inclusion in writing. Again, we're seeing that bounce back for the biology section. This is meets, and then in masters. And then social studies, grade eight, and US history. In a lot of ways, the history is a writing test, or it's reading as well. So we're going to see a lot of that in the next set of slides. And then you can see in masters where we are for the five years. All right, so the next set, these are MISD versus the state in approaches, meets, and masters. And we put approaches on there. We don't want to focus on that. Approaches just means you didn't really pass, but we're not going to make you test again. But it's not considered passing in terms of accountability. We don't get credit for approaches. We need kids at meets and masters. So, but it's still important to see that those are students that at least don't have to retest for that year at the high school level. So this is math, MISD versus the state, and those two areas of economically disadvantaged and Hispanic, because those are pretty fair comparison. And if it's green, the number is the percentage we were above the state. The red is the percentage where we were below. And again, seventh grade math, not a surprise, because of the way we pull out those who can go on to eighth grade curriculum. So lots of things to celebrate in the math area. In terms of reading, it's kind of the reverse. We've got some that we're on par. And in a lot of ways, you know, 1, 2, 3% below the state, reading has always been a challenge, and it's one that we continue to work on. Some bright spots in English too there, but by and large, we're not hitting the state average. While we may have performed better than a previous year, we're still lagging behind the state in some respects for those two categories. For science, the only area where we were not above the state was fifth grade masters. And then for social studies, red again, because I want y'all to think of this. This is a reading test. There's a lot of content. They have to draw conclusions. They have to know cause and effect. They have to apply a lot of things that are reading comprehension level tasks to be able to answer those questions. It's not just famous people, places, and dates. So here's some of the things we have going on. And again, I know that y'all have seen this, but we don't, we didn't wait for the state to tell us anything on the 31st about cut points. We've got things in the works. I would say probably been working since early last spring, definitely into the summer. And so the four core areas, the content coordinators are working through with a lot of strategies, particularly addressing writing rubric alignment, because now we know what it is and we've seen it. So now we know what we're, what we're shooting for. And then in terms of CCMR, we have district committee, campus monthly committee. We really put eyes on. It's, it's almost like we have a network of people supporting in various ways, through content coordinators, administrators, retired teachers. There's, there's a whole group of people that are working through both content support and CCMR. So where we are now is, we finally have an accountability manual for 2023. Five months after the school year ended, it's official. But like I said, we're already doing the work. Campuses have refined their campus improvement plans. Some campuses have created their targeted improvement plans because we saw areas of need. We also have had support through Region 10, both them coming here and us taking leadership teams there. And then with our new position with executive director, executive principal, Dr. Grubbs has worked really closely with a handful of schools, all just to move that needle where we need it to be. And then more data is coming tomorrow. We'll get a data file. That's how they calculated what they did. And then on the Thursday, the 16th, they'll be releasing if any schools are comprehensive support. But like I said, we're not waiting for them to tell us what we need to work on, because we're already doing the work. So what questions can I answer for you now? It is a lot.
We are in an era that rules are changing all the time. And, and I know there's a big effort to make public education look bad, and that's why they changed the rules. And then after we've done what we have to do, then they tell us all these other rules. I understand that. However, it seems that you have a good grasp of, right now, what has to be done. And I commend you for that, because you're grabbing the, you're, you're just attacking the problem, and you're finding solu, you're finding solutions, and you're working it out. And, and to be honest, some of the results I've seen tonight, really not that bad considering that fact. I think we're, we're going on the right path, and we're finding out what we have to do to be in a better place.
Agreed.
So thank you for all that, and congratulations for thinking so far ahead.
I will say, I can be happy with some of this, but I'm never satisfied.
Of course not.
Until we're at 100% across the board for everyone, so.
But you're doing good.
Thank you. Next year.
Yeah.
Next spring.
Next year, don't worry.
And you know, we have to say, thank you to Dr. Hammett, too.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, Dr. Hammett, yeah. So, yeah. And I guess we need to include Dr. Fields, and you know.
It's a team effort. Okay, thank you, yes.
I believe Ms. Austin approved campus and district performance objectives. I believe you're on, oh, oh, Dr. Fields is going to do that one. Okay, cool.
We're just changing it up a little bit. Each spring, our campus and district leadership teams come together to analyze all sorts of data around campus performance, campus perceptions, and they identify their greatest needs, draft performance objectives, and strategies to improve their campus and our district. And that is what is before you today. You have in the online board hand, board book, you have the campus and district performance objectives. And according to Board Policy BQ, it requires that the board approve all campus and district performance objectives. Online and, in board book. Mm-hmm, yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, you're back. Thank you, Dr. Fields.
So this part is their House Bill III board goals that you also have to approve. As you know, that there are three areas where we have to adopt goals five years out. That's third grade reading, math, and CCMR. So what we looked at are, we're trying to show incremental growth across those areas over those next five years, and then campuses will use that information to guide their own goals, and that'll be reflected in the campus improvement plans. So this first slide are your third grade reading. So from 2022 through 2028, we're looking at 2% growth. So going from 37 to 49%. And this is a great time of, I could be happy with that, but we're not satisfied with having 49% at meets. We want it higher. We can also reevaluate as we see that we're shooting the top off that goal, doing better. We can move that. But we looked at 2% incremental for reading, and primarily because it is a difficult task to improve reading for a student by that, by more than that. For third grade math, we were a little more aggressive, 3%, so from 37 to 55. And again, we can adjust those as we see that we are exceeding those goals. The last one, though, is where we had the most discussion. We were the most aggressive and had the most discussion even through today. So for 2022, we were at 60%, which, for the state standard, that would have been an A. We now know that's 88, but we can't go from 60 to 88 in a year. So we looked at 8% over the first two years, then 7, 6, and then if we can, those last two years, 3% to get to 95. Because when you think about just its numbers on the page, 95%, but those are students that are graduating. They need to leave here ready for whatever's next. If it's college, then they've passed TSI, and they don't have to take developmental reading or math and pay for courses that are no credit. If it's career, they've got some industry-based certification, and they're leaving here ready to go to the workforce, or they're going the military route. So I think, when I think of it as, if 95% of students left here with one of those, that's, that's great. And again, satisfied at 100, but right now, we're incrementally getting there, but we're being very aggressive about it, and we have a lot of things in place to help us get there. So those are the three board goals that we have set for you all to discuss and/or approve.
Yeah.
We had talked about these goals in our last Team of Eight training board, so.
You did.
This is just a public version of those.
Any further discussion? This is a report, yes. Any, any other thing? Okay. All righty, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. We have an action item to consider to employ or accept volunteer chaplains. This is an action item. Is there?
Madam President, okay, you're going to address it? Okay.
All right.
Good evening, President Hornsby and Board. This summer, the 88th legislature passed Senate Bill 763, and it has implications for you all. 763 amended Chapter 23 of the Texas Education Code, and it requires each school board to record a vote sometime between September 1st of 2023 and March 1st of 2024 on whether to adopt a policy authorizing a campus of the district to employ or, or accept as a volunteer a chaplain to provide support, services, and programs for students as directed by the Board of Trustees. This is an action item, and I believe it's included in your board book notes as well.
It is, it is, it is. This requires a motion? On the, to consider.
This, this is the motion right here.
Employ or accept volunteer chaplains. Okay. Robert will read.
I make a motion that the district will not permit district campuses to employ or accept chaplains as volunteers to provide support service, support services and programs for students at this time.
Motion is second by Mr. Carbo, okay? Is there any further discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment. I had a lot of notes here, because I appreciate that the state's trying to help out districts that are short counselors throughout the state. I know that several of us had sat and listened to committee meetings when the chaplains issue came up. Dr. Feinglass was there and sat through the whole thing down in Austin itself, listening to the pros and cons. And you know, there are people on both sides of this thing. But one of the things that I'm concerned about, and I respect about this, this district, I appreciate the counselors we have in this district. You know, our school counselors are trained professionals who design and deliver comprehensive school counseling programs that provide academic, career, college readiness, and social emotional support to our students. They also provide individual and group counseling to students who need short-term crisis intervention. School counselors also consult and collaborate with students, parents, and teachers, administrators, our community agencies, and they address student needs and concerns. And our school counselors also coordinate various school activities and services that support student success. I believe that we respect our counselors. We have great counselors. I think we are full, fully staffed, and I don't see the need to bring in some volunteer chaplains to assist at this point. If we were to do that, to me, that'd be disrespecting our counselors that do a great job in this district. And that's why I'm supportive of the motion.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carried. All right. I know we got a discussion of district-wide intruder detection and audit reports finding.
Just my monthly visit about, yeah, I feel like an intruder sometimes. But we, we, we have begun, I think last month, I told you, we had just started. We had a couple of campuses that already received visits. As of today, we've had 10 campuses receive visits. We actually had our Fall Safety and Security Meeting earlier today that a few of us in this room attended, and had some discussions around the intruder audits, as well as other safety and security measures. I think it's important to talk about the intruder audits and keeping our exterior doors locked is just one facet of our safety and security program. There's a lot of things that go into it. I think it's also important to remind you all of some of the dollars that were secured with the passing of the TRE last fall, and that we are currently working on the project to where all of our exterior, exterior doors are monitored, to where we know when they're propped open or disengaged, and it would notify campus personnel if they are. So there's a lot of measures we're putting in place to, to help with this, and we're just going to continue that effort as we move forward.
Our meeting is adjourned at 8:36.